Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order for this evening's March tenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Supervisors meeting. I'm having some technical difficulty, so you're not able to see me at this point in time. Again, calling to order if we can begin the meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
Republic.
To the Republic.
Which is fair.
One nation, under God.
The God. Indivisible. Living justice for all. Thank you.
You have to practice that.
We really should.
Big time.
We all had that down in third grade. You know we did, you know?
All right. I will begin this evening's meeting with the understanding that, again, we've got some hearing decorum and public comments to make. If possible, please rename yourself when entering the meeting and to remain muted until the public comment period is opened up following the presentation. Is any questions? Donna Weicher will be handling you and all that area at that point in time. Underneath Board Briefings number two A, executive sessions were held on February tenth at five o'clock for personnel, legal, and real estate issues. John Nagel, do you want to go?
Chairman, I just want to mention we should edit that it was legal and real estate. There was no personnel discussed.
Okay.
This agenda up in advance, not knowing exactly what we're going to talk about. So we did talk about legal and real estate matters.
Okay, corrected. All right.
Thank you.
Are there any details, John, that you want to talk about with Andy Ditterman's recently hosted Zoom podcast?
Yeah, I guess I'm not muted. I'm not muted now. I think the agenda speaks for itself from what I can, what we were able to gather. Andy, in partnership with the Coatsville NAACP, hosted a Zoom podcast with a pretty good list of folks that spoke on Black history. And apparently throughout the month of March, there's going to be other events that are going to be shown on both Facebook posts. So we're just trying to promote that as part of the diversity theme that's been going on for over a year now. And that's all I really have to report.
Okay, thank you, John. Next on the agenda is two C. Ted Locker will give us his monthly update on property management codes and any recent activity that's been occurring. Ted?
Thank you, Scott. It's been kind of quiet. The property at thirty-four Birch, which has been vacant for quite a while. It's unfortunate that the the woman who owned the property after her father passed also passed. And now the brother is the executor. And it seems like we're making progress with him to get the property cleaned up and probably get it sold would be my assumption. Also drove past the Home Depot now that most of the snow has melted. And it seems like a lot of what was there a month or so ago is gone. But it seems that there is some continued problem with people just dumping things in the upper lot there. So we'll keep after them as well. And that's really it for my report on this month.
Okay, just one question I've got is my understanding is that the the ongoing issue pertaining to the property burned out building behind Wawa has gone to court, correct? And then there was a delay.
Yes, it did go to the district justice about actually two months ago, almost now, I guess. He gave him thirty days to get it cleaned up. And then with the snow, he actually gave him till April to extended, I guess, the time for the return hearing. So hopefully by April, we'll have it all cleaned up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is some accolades that have come down from the government to the East Whiteland Township Finance Area. Applaud our finance folks for this, but in, I guess, our fourth consecutive year, the Government Finance Office Association has awarded East Whiteland Township a Certificate of Achievement as an award of financial reporting achievement for responsible accounting arrangements. And John, I don't know if there's any, any specific things you'd like to add to that?
The only thing I would add is that is that there's not too many of these awards given out, at least in Pennsylvania. I think we're in a select class of municipalities. So we're, we're very proud of this practice and will continue that and work diligently. We have two new finance people in the finance office. So they've hit the ground running with getting the audit done for 2020. So we're fully confident that we'll be able to make it five years at this time next year.
Sure. So this certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting.
And it's a Yeah, there's a, there's a companion one for budgets. I've never really pursued that. We are of limited staff. So at some point, we may consider doing that. But there, there, this is one of two awards that the profession gives out.
Okay. Well, it's a good accomplishment. Thank you for your work on that.
Thanks, Scott.
Next up is item two E. As an introduction tonight, as you recall, last month, the board approved preliminary land development at Bishop Tube, subject to nineteen conditions being met, including the implementation of remedial scope work developed by environmental standard and approved by the DEP. Tonight, we wanted to inform our residents about the ninety day comment period for the remedial feasibility study. And if Steve Brown can lead us into that overview and some information pertaining to that. Steve?
Thank you, Scott. I'll, I'll be brief. What, two reports known as the RI and FS, which are short for Remedial Investigation and Feasibility Study Reports, have been accepted by the DEP as of February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Those reports probably have been, since they've been submitted, it's been probably almost two years since they were submitted and the review process started. What that means is DEP is now working on the remedial action plan and what they call the administrative record, which they will release after it is one completed and reviewed internally by their legal department. It has to also be reviewed and approved by the regional director and then by the Deputy Secretary of DEP in the central office in Harrisburg. Based on my conversations with Dustin Armstrong at the DEP, he believes it could be done within a couple of months. But that's probably not likely. It would be more likely six months from now when they would release the remedial action plan and the administrative record. And at that time, that's when we received a grant, a fifty thousand dollar grant. It's called a technical evaluation grant. And that's when we would use our consultant, BSTI, to review the record and review the remedial action plan. And we would participate in that ninety day public comment period as as Scott mentioned. And that's really, that's really it in terms of an update.
Okay, thanks. Next on the agenda would normally be public hearings. But seeing that we have none, we'll move on to planning and development. Zach, if you can give us some information on the subdivision and land development applications under four A where the parking expansion, kind of simple, but.
Yeah, I'll be brief, like Steve Brown always tells me to be. This is a combined preliminary slash final land development plan to construct ninety-nine additional parking spaces and stormwater management at property at forty-five Liberty Boulevard to the corner of Sweetard Road and Liberty. It's in the Office Business Park District. At last month's meeting, the board authorized the solicitor and staff to draft a, an approval resolution. Within it are some project specific and some, you know, boilerplate type conditions relative to the land development process. There's eight waivers included in the resolution. And that is what's before you this evening. So if you have any questions, I can, I can answer them. And I believe the applicant's attorney is also on hand and the applicant.
I'm also on, Zach.
Okay, yeah. Keith Hance from Equus Partners is also here.
Okay. Again, if everyone can mute their computers here so we don't hear the background noise, that'd be great. Appreciate it. I think this one has been talked about a number of times. I don't have any specific questions. Sue or Rich, do you have any questions?
No, we've been over this many times.
Yeah, same. None. Any questions have been answered in the past.
Right. Donna, do we have any public comments pertaining to this?
Not pertaining to this, no.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion. On decision.
I can make a motion to approve LD thirteen twenty twenty for parking expansion at forty-five Liberty Place, Liberty, or Liberty Parkway, I guess it is, preliminary final land development.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Zach, we've got rezoning of the well, we've got a discussion here to talk about the requested rezoning for Nickerbacher Track.
Donna, wasn't there one comment?
Well, there's actually a hand raised, but it came in before, right before Zach started. So I didn't know if you wanted me to go backwards. I was, I asked him if they could just wait till this part was done. But if you want to go back, there was a question on Bishop Tube.
Probably good to do it now. Get that out.
Want to do it now? Okay, Deb, you can go ahead, Deb. You can unmute yourself.
All right.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem, not a problem. Zoom is not as easy as, as it appears. Although I was somewhat disappointed in your decision last, at the last month's meeting, I wanted to remind you that Bishop Tube, Clean and Green, is still in the fight to block the development of the property on Mailan Road and to ensure that it is cleaned up safely. As you may be aware, the Riverkeeper Network recently won another court battle on behalf, on our behalf, concerning Constitution Drive Partners and the PPA. Not only did Constitution Drive Partners violate the terms of the original PPA, they attempted to circumvent the law by putting a new agreement in its place without going through proper channels and after the fact. But the law is on our side as is the Pennsylvania Constitution, which ensures our right to clean air and water. That being said, I am still urging you to join in our cause to make Bishop Tube Clean and Green. Since Constitution Drive Partners has blatantly tried to circumvent the law, and because this is not the first incident of such behavior, I have a few questions concerning the resolution agreement which you reached with them at last month's meeting. One, who from the township will be responsible to oversee the proposed development and ensure the agreement is followed? Two, what expertise do they have in the environmental field and with the cleanup of toxic sites? Three, what will the frequency or schedule of inspections be? Four, who will be responsible to pay for this additional oversight? And five, what provisions have you made for the residents to obtain financial compensations due to property damage, lowering of property values, relocation costs, healthcare expenses, and long-term health risks? I would appreciate, you know, I realize it's quite a bit of, but I would like to eventually receive some answers to those questions. Additionally, if you could please update your Bishop Tube link on the township webpage, there are a number of documents that were just released that you had talked about, and also this resolution that are not on the list of important documents for citizens to peruse. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Okay, there was one more, I think Barbara Arnold.
Yes, hi, thank you.
Sure.
Quick questions. First of all, thank you, Deb. I also got the information about the the court affirming the earlier decision about the PPA being voided. And I did send a public comment email. I included on that email, Donna, a link to the DEP's Bishop Tube website. If that makes it easier for you to upload it to the township website, that would be great.
Yes, thank you.
One question, you mentioned this ninety day comment period. And I just wondered, does that start after the remedial, remedial action plan and the administrative record are reviewed? And then the consultant, is that at that point? Or does it start now?
It, it starts when they, when the DEP releases the proposed remedial action plan and the administrative record. They, as I understand it, they'll have to publish a notice for the process in what's called a Pennsylvania bulletin. I've been told that they will try to give us a heads up. I don't know how much of a heads up we'll get before the process starts. But so it does not start now. It'll start later, most likely sometime this year.
Would that be posted on the township's website?
As soon as we know, yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the end of the questions that we have for right now.
Okay, thank you. Next is a discussion of the requested rezoning of the Nickerbacher Track. It is currently by right for office and office park warehousing industrial. And
Industrial.
Sorry, Sue.
It's not industrial. It's Office Business Park.
Office Business Park at this point in time and is being requested to be rezoned for residential R1.
RMH.
Well, it'll be going into RMHS. So at this point in time, we have recently received some Phase One Phase One information on the unregulated portion of the property. And it, we have just received it last week, so it's being reviewed. But there are certainly a number of questions pertaining to other aspects of the regulated portion. And I know Jason Dempsey is here tonight if he would like to add any comments pertaining to this rezoning request.
Good evening. This is Denise Yornoff. I'm here with Jason. And Jason is also on the phone along with our environmental consultants and attorney as well. And we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As you know, Jason with DP Whiteland LLC is the equitable owner of the Nickerbacher property. And we've been talking and working with the township for probably close to two years on the possibility of rezoning the property, which, as you said, is currently zoned OBP and a portion is owned R1. The total of the property is about a hundred and seventy-seven acres. And of that, a hundred and forty-two are the OBP. The OBP does allow office, as Mr. Roman stated. It also does allow warehouse and distribution use within that district. Thirty-four of the acres are within the R1 zoning district. The request by DP Whiteland is to rezone the entirety of the property to RMH. And the purpose of that is to have the property developed as a two hundred and eighty unit age restricted, age targeted residential development rather than as a commercial, either office and or warehouse type of development. Basically, it's a very low density type of use at about two units per acre. And the development would be within a very small area of the property, basically within about twenty-five percent of the entirety of the, this large acreage with about seventy-five percent of the property remaining green area. There would also be a large area around Valley Creek, as everyone knows runs through here. And there would be a large setback from Valley Creek. And there would be access to Valley Creek along with many trails throughout the property. We've been talking about this, as I said, for a while with the township back last August. We actually filed the request for the rezoning. And we have been working towards a hearing, which was to be scheduled last October. But prior to that time, the township did ask for some additional environmental information, which we have provided. And we have been working with the township's environmental consultant and the township solicitor and the township's environmental solicitor with our, with our attorney, environmental attorney, as well as our environmental consultants. And we've provided us all of the information that we have. We are very comfortable with all the information that we have, which we believe shows that the property is very appropriate for residential development. And we've provided that to the township. And I know the township has been reviewing that itself. We would very much like this evening to ask the township to consider scheduling or rescheduling the hearing, which, as I said, was supposed to take place last October so that we can move forward on this. And we are happy to answer any questions. I know that Jason does want to speak for a few minutes about the benefits that he believes the residential type of development would bring, especially over and above what otherwise is permitted on this property. So I'm going to turn it over to Jason for a few minutes to give you his thoughts on the benefits of this potential rezoning.
Thank you, Denise. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
I, I, I think Denise did a nice job at explaining what it is we're trying to do. And I've been enthusiastic at some of these meetings and passionate about what we think is the appropriate, most responsible development of the site. It certainly has not been easy to convey why we think this is the correct move for the property. And we hope that after tonight, that the board supervisors can look at this and understand that, albeit all things not being perfect all times, that it is perhaps the best way forward. Because these just, these things just can't stand still. As a reminder, I'm a resident of this township. I've been, been very involved with the township on, on a number of levels. And not just on the real, not from a real estate development perspective, but I think as much a part of the community and doing things for the community as possible. And if you don't know what that is, I'm not here to advertise that. But why rezone it? Why change the use? The current use, we've discussed it. It doesn't allow the warehouse. I don't think that that's the best. I did not think that that's the best use for the community, which is why we propose the residential use. And the residential use that we did propose, we have proposed is going to be for fifty-five and older product. And that alleviates a lot of burden on the school district of which we all, well, of which we know has some certain constraints at the moment of which is being evaluated. So I think it's very responsible to go about it in the way in which we have. More so, I think that the benefits to the community, the lower traffic impact, lower light pollution, it supports the local businesses in an appropriate way. I think it provides a better tax base for the township. These are just a few things. But I think we've come to a point for our team and for the property and for the way forward is it comes to time to make a decision. We've brought with us tonight Jonathan Spurgle, who's our environmental counsel, as well as Walter Hunt Gardner from RT Environmental, who's our environmental engineer. As Denise mentioned, there was a concern and a legitimate concern. We respected that. I think we cooperated very well with the township to provide information and data, scientific data as to why this property shows no concern to human health. And the amount of data we provided is extensive. Some of it tracks over a decade. So we're in a position where we believe, we believe we've conveyed it to the township that there is no ongoing environmental concern at this location. And the proposed use is the most appropriate use. But I'm not asking you to take my word for that. Again, we brought our consultants who have collectively, you know, Jonathan, I don't want to date you, but you have many, many years under your belt as an environmental attorney. And Walter has many, many years under his belt as an environmental engineer. And I respect the both of them. So I'm not making determination in a cavalier way. I'd made a determination based on science, based on data, and based on the consultation of the experts in the industry that are the practitioners. So I think as it relates to the question of environmental conditions of which, given the history that we have with other sites, warranty the questions that were, that, that occurred, I'm going to allow Jonathan to perhaps step in here and elaborate on that a little bit more and probably articulate a little bit better than I have. So Jonathan, are you, are you there? Are you available?
I'm here, yes. Hey, Jason, how are you? Good evening.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, as, as Jason mentioned, Walt Hung Gardner from RT Environmental, who's has intimate familiarity with this site, prepared a Phase One environmental site assessment that was provided to the township solicitor, their environmental solicitor, and is, I think, under review by environmental consultants for the township. The, the area that is proposed for residential redevelopment is what's called Area A. It's the western portion of the site. It's not the, what, what I think was mentioned is a regulated landfill. There was fill area in this i- in the western area. There was extensive geotechnical borings that were performed throughout the entire site. And the geotechnical borings identified soil and what I'll call common fill material, concrete, brick, things like that, did not identify municipal-like waste that one would expect in a landfill. What, in addition, there are groundwater monitoring wells that are located throughout the site, down gradient of where the area that's proposed for residential redevelopment. And since two thousand and eleven, and these wells are sampled on a regular basis, but since two thousand and eleven, there have been no constituents that have been identified above residential standards, Act Two standards in Pennsylvania. At one point over ten years ago, there were low levels of chlorinated solvents that were identified. There are no levels that have been, again, identified in over ten years that above residential statewide health standards, the most stringent standards. So this is a site from our standpoint that is completely consistent with residential redevelopment. Because of the fill material, RT has identified that on a going forward basis, it would be appropriate in connection with residential reuse and land development to undertake a Phase Two investigation to further evaluate the quality of the fill and connection with that investigation, if there was any municipal-like waste at that point or any soil impacts above residential or any soil impacts above residential statewide health standards, at that point, if it was rezoned for residential and resident, in connection with the residential development, the applicant would enter the site into the Act Two program to be able to demonstrate attainment with residential standards. Act Two program is a voluntary program. But at this point, everything we've seen to date, and again, there were extensive geotechnical borings, and there is a good amount of groundwater data and a number of wells that have been sampled for a number of years. There is nothing that is inconsistent with proposed residential redevelopment for the site. If you have any specific questions, like I said, and Jason and Denise indicated, Walt Hung Gardner is here as well from RT, who can provide specific responses to questions.
Mr. Chair, can we take the comment from Steve Hahn, the environmental attorney?
Yes. Steve? You're muted, Steve.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yeah, sure. You're fine now.
Yeah. Thank you, Denise, Mr. Dempsey. Jonathan, thank you for your presentation. And thank you for providing the information last week, the Phase One report. I have a question, and it's based on, Jonathan, what I think you just said and what Denise said. You're looking to rezone the property, the entire property, the entire 177 acres. And again, I hope you understand that we're still reviewing the Phase One that was provided to us last week. The Phase One appears to address what's known as Area A, which is approximately 75 acres. Has there been a Phase One or similar report done for the remaining 100, you know, 100, approximately 100 acres? And I know in the Phase One report, there's a reference to adjacent property. There's a reference to subject property. So we see, at least from our initial review, the 75 acres, which this particular Phase One that you provided applies to. But again, the rest of the property, has there been a Phase One done on the other area of the property that you're looking to have rezoned residential?
That would be Area B, right?
This is Jason. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, Mr. Dempsey.
Zach, it might be helpful if you had the plan pulled up at this point, so that when we refer to Area A and Area B, we can discuss that. And Steve, to better answer your question, Walter Hunt Gardner is on the phone or on the Zoom. And the Phase One that was performed was done by his firm. Walter, are you there?
Yes, I'm on, Jason. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. It might be an appropriate time for you, maybe perhaps you to respond to Steve's question or Jonathan, unless you think otherwise.
Great. So Steve, when we looked at the initial property and stuff, our Phase One was really looking at addressing the entire property for the full proposed development, both in Area A and Area B. When we got a little bit more focused into it, to the core of what we're looking to do in the near term, it was more looking at Area A. And we refocused the Phase One report to Area A. So we have done a Phase One that covers Area B as well. That would be something that we would provide separately once we started to initiate further discussions on Area B.
Thank you, Walter. Is the proposed residential development, would that be in both Area A and Area B?
Correct, it would be. Steve, this is Jason speaking.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dempsey. So I know one of the, one of the pieces of information that we would be interested in, obviously, is is the Phase One for Area B, since that also will cover residential properties. So we're looking at, you know, the portions of the entire parcel that you are planning to develop residential properties and looking at the, you know, initially the Phase One. And again, thank you for the Phase One for Area A. And so we would also be interested in taking a look at the Phase One for the other areas under consideration for residential development.
So one of the things, Steve, just to, I just want to highlight, and I think it's important for the board supervisors and the other participants
Sure.
here, the majority of Area A was farmland. It wasn't, it wasn't used, it didn't have a previous use for landfill. And I think what Jonathan was saying, this is where we feel confident about, is with the number of groundwater monitoring wells and the history of the groundwater monitoring wells that exist there, in addition to the amount of geotechnical work, and now that we have the plan up, I know, and the geotechnical report that we did provide to yourself and the consultants, the BTSI, I think it is, we dug a little over 30 holes on that site for geotechnical investigation. Significant amount of holes, soil, soil sampling, things of that nature. In the data that was given to me and reviewed by our consultants, and I rely heavily, as obviously does the township, rely heavily on our consultants, there was nothing that suggested anything of danger to human health, given the extensive amount of data that we have. And I'm, of course, paraphrasing as a non-practitioner, and I allow Jonathan or Walter to chime in on that. If we didn't feel it was appropriate for this type of use, you know, our consultants would be pointing to that and letting us know we wouldn't have gotten this far. But hopefully that answered your question, Steve, but.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dempsey. I, and with respect to Area A, I, you know, I've taken, I've taken a look, our consultants taken a look at, you know, part of the board. Again, we're still, we're still taking a look at it. And I appreciate Jonathan Spurgill's response about, you know, potential Phase Two. We see that, and that's all well-taken. But again, if there, that's Area A. If there's any information for the other area that is proposed for residential development, not Area A, which we have the information, that would be, that would be helpful.
Steve, I will add, I will add to this is that as far as the township is concerned here at this point in time, we need to do our due diligence on this property. And part of the due diligence process is that we need to see a Phase One on the unregulated portion of the property.
I'm sorry, who was that speaking?
Scott Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Jonathan, do you have anything else to add? I feel, again, we've done our due diligence, we've done our due diligence. You have the same information we have, as I said. Our position.
I mean, right, so Area A is the unregulated portion of the property. And Walt, I don't know if you want to speak about Area B? As Jason indicated, there is a Phase One, and we can, we can provide documentation to the township about that as well. But Walt, I don't know if you want to add anything right now as well?
I think it's important to remember that, you know, the, the regulated portion of the landfill, the main piece of the landfill here is the open center portion of the site. There's no current residential development proposed there. That's, again, part of the open space that we're looking at moving forward here. The investigation work that was completed in what's called Area B, again, there was significant geotechnical investigation work there as well, too. The general findings are very similar. It's rock construction debris, things along those lines. The thing that we find more of here in the Area B is more related to historic landfilling activities that happen there and stuff. So there is some more presence of some of the municipal waste there. The things that we're looking at, where we're trying to determine, you know, if this is suitable for development, really comes into what are the exposure pathways? You know, can someone be on here and safely to live here and not have any concern about exposure? And what we've done through the due diligence process, we've decided that, yes, we can do a safe development here. We have a significant amount of groundwater data that shows there's really no impacts coming from any of the materials that are present on the property. The pathways for exposure to someone being on the site can be eliminated. We can eliminate, you know, potential vapor intrusion-type concerns through construction development. There's a soil cap that's currently out there that prevents any direct exposure to any of the materials. So from that standpoint, we do believe that, you know, both, you know, Area, Area B in particular, with the landfill materials that are probably present there at depth, can be safely developed upon.
Do you have a Phase One report for that area?
Yeah, like I said, our Phase One that we initially prepared for the property was for the entire property and stuff, which included this area. So we can, we can prepare that report and stuff and get that together.
Why hasn't that already been supplied? We've requested it several times.
I don't understand that question. We supplied our Phase One report.
We were told at one point, we had all your environmental data, everything in your file. And then we find out later, there's a Phase One. The Phase One you gave us is only on Phase A of the development, not on Phase B. And the concern of the township is the unregulated portion of the landfill comprising Area B. So that seems to be the most important piece of environmental information that we still have yet to receive.
I instructed all of our consultants to provide you all, every bit of data we have.
Well, I'm hearing now that you have that data and you haven't supplied it.
You should, you should have it.
We don't have it. You never gave it to us.
You should have it.
No, we don't have it. You never gave it to us.
If you don't have it, we will certainly get it to you right away.
Oh, Joe, I'm not saying we're not giving it to you. I just said to you and to the entire board that you should have everything we have. I'm not hiding anything. I'm not hiding anything. I've got nothing to hide. I've been honest.
You're going to get it to us. You haven't given it to us already.
If it's not in your files, it'll be in your files as soon as, as soon as, soon as humanly possible.
That's great. We just want to evaluate the whole of the property and if testing.
I was under the impression you had the Phase One for Area B.
If it was all done, that's great.
Just as, just as much of a disappointing surprise to me at this very minute, that you don't have a Phase One for Area B. If I knew you didn't have a Phase One for Area B, I wouldn't have wasted my time getting on this call. So I apologize for that. Other than that.
It's kind of where we've been for months, Jason, is like, and you and I have said that you say we've got everything, and then we don't have everything. We just got the Phase One for Area A.
You guys have had stuff since October, so.
Now, that's not what my side is telling me. They say they just got it.
Yeah, the township has had information since October.
Well, it had some information.
Since October 9th, we've been sending information to the township.
We got, we got Phase One last week.
Phase One was requested, Phase One was sent.
Sent last week. Not since October.
Okay. The data that was originally requested was sent in October, October 9th. 100%. And I, I, I'm not, I'm certainly not here to argue. I'm just making sure that I'm telling the truth.
Sure. Can the environmental guide?
We did provide a lot of information on October 9th. We did conduct numerous calls, conference calls with the township. We're not, this, this, these things did happen. And in the last call, which I participated in with the environmental engineer for the township, at the conclusion of the call, I specifically asked the question, is there anything else that anyone needs? Is there anything else we can provide? Do you have any additional questions? I just want to make sure our side of the story is being told. Anything that is, that may or may not be missing on that list, we'll make sure that it's provided. So.
Right.
Just, yeah, we received the Phase One on March 2nd, I believe. And again, so just so it's, unless anyone has any different information on that regard, I believe it was, again, last week that we received the entire Phase One.
Entire without Area B.
Without Area B, the Phase One assessment for Area A, correct, yes.
We have that information. They were treated as two separate investigations. Walter, you're still here on the phone, I recall. That's, that was, that was part of our approach on the assessment of the property.
That's correct.
I can't understand why you would do it in separate pieces, but you're asking for rezoning for the entire thing. And, and you, you understand, with us having gone through the very painful Bishop Duke situation, where we rezoned it for residential without really understanding all the environmental concerns, we are particularly cautious about any other rezonings for residential, where we don't know every single thing about the environment. So, so we're a little gun-shy here.
I understand that.
I know where we are.
I do understand that. Denise, you aren't also on the phone, who could probably support me on this statement. I think our approach in the rezoning, we've been extraordinarily cooperative. That's been my perspective on it. Or we've opened the door to all of our consultants and all of our engineers and all the data that we have. And if there's something that was overlooked that you don't have, there's nothing being hidden there. The geotechnical information, I go back to this, there are new chlorinated solvents on the site. The well data that is there, that's been provided, that in addition to all the other additional information, of which we could provide a list, Walter, you could run through it, but it would bore everyone. And our geotechnical investigation there, I mean, going down 15, 20 feet in some places and doing, you know, extensive geotechnical work, there's been nothing to suggest that we have an issue there, nor has there been any point in time of which we haven't, we have, there's not been a point in time in which we have intentionally not been honest. And I think for something like this to work, honesty is a very important part of the process, and we participate in that. And I trust that we're all being honest with each other. This, I think, is a better plan than what could be there. That hasn't changed. My opinion on that hasn't changed. So with that being said, Denise, and this is something where perhaps you can chime in, I do, I do not believe, with the public listening, it has not been my experience in the 20 years of doing real estate development, where I've provided a Phase One investigation report to a township. We have, just now, for the first time, at least on my behalf. And in addition to that, providing all the additional environmental information, because the authorities have jurisdiction on that, are separate from the township. However, we recognize, understand and sympathize with the position the township supervisors have been put in previously in the past, where there were environmental concerns. Here, we have none of them. But we're, we genuinely have, I think, cooperated, participating in conference calls, following up with questions. All I've seen, you know, listen, listen, listed emails of, of, of working cooperatively. So I do not think we've been uncooperative. But, you know, I think it's, we're creating a different process, which is unusual. It's just not been my experience where we provide this amount of data to a township in the process of looking to rezone. Most of the focus is on what the plant could look like, what the, what the use would look like. But we understand. So we are, I believe, we've been very cooperative on that front.
And I would just chime into that, that we have been working on this for quite some time, and the township has been very helpful in meeting and discussing the issues. And to the extent that there's additional environmental information for the Phase One for Area B that the township hasn't received, we will forward that. At this point, what we're asking, because we've been talking about this for so much time, and you've heard our team is very comfortable, completely comfortable with moving forward with the residential use on this property. And we are asking the township to authorize scheduling the hearing. And of course, we all know that scheduling the hearing and having the hearing doesn't mean that you're ultimately going to agree to rezone the property, but at least it starts the process and puts some time constraints, since we've been at this for such a long period of time. And we're asking the township to at least authorize a hearing for most likely more than 30 days from now. I don't know how it would fall on your calendar, but it would probably be 45 days. more than thirty days from now. I don't know how it would fall on your calendar, but it would probably be forty-five days from this time. And during that period of time, there certainly would be ample opportunity for continued review by the township solicitor and your environmental consultant to review the additional phase one on the area B. At the end of the day, the township determines to rezone this, and there's an issue with putting residential on this property, which as Jason said, is ultimately determined by other entities as well. Jason is the one who's at risk for the change in the zoning on the property. But at this point, we need to know whether the township is interested in moving forward with this so that Jason and his team can make a decision on whether it makes sense to continue to work towards this goal or to look at other options.
Well, I don't know how the other supervisors feel about scheduling the hearing. We have no, had not talked about that. I, I think we're not necessarily opposed to residential on this plot. I like a lot of things about your plan, particularly how much of the space that you leave open and available to the public. I would kind of hate to see the entire thing packed with warehouses. But the environmental concerns are, are uppermost at this point. So what is, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I mean, the fact that we're even continuing to say the word residential about this site means that there is a leaning towards it. However, it is a former solid waste landfill. And we need to make sure the environmental part is covered. I know the statement was made that it's the applicant's risk. But all you need to do is see what happened with Bishop Tube, and it's not just the applicant's risk, it's the township. And, and this is nothing like Bishop Tube, nothing like it at all. But environmental is, is sensitive. The sooner we get that information, the better. I lean towards residential on this site. Uh, I don't know, I haven't decided personally whether it should be a conditional use approach. What the density should be in the text of the ordinance itself also. I know there's a covenant, which is great. But I think we also need to tweak the RMH density, just in case something goes now crazy with the covenant someday, as long as the zoning is in place, which restricts density. That's what matters most. Things like that. But we really got to get the environmental understood.
Rich, if you don't mind, can I respond to what you just said? Because we don't, we don't, we don't disagree with you. We've, I think we're getting to the nub of one question. If we looked at area A and the information and the data that's there and available. It is, it is very clear to us, and I think it's clear to, I, I can't speak for the township's team, both engineer and legal counsel. But area A is, should no longer be a concern to anybody. Area B has been a focus of question, and it was a focus of question in the last comment that came back to us from the township's consultants. I thought that we had answered all, all of those items. I've seen the email, the information that you're looking for. It's, you will, they will, they will have it. It doesn't take months to, for it to be consumed. I assure you of that. And we'll have that. We have that. The conclusion's going to be that it's no different than what we've, we've been discussing at this, but this has been very helpful to make sure that we're having this conversation in this forum. So that everyone does understand that there's a high level of cooperation and sensitivity to everything that you just said. So hopefully you can feel the cooperation from our side of the fence and what we're trying to do. So I appreciate you saying that.
And my comment would be, Jason, this is Scott Lambert. Is that Bishop Tube is still raw on a lot of people's minds. And Paramount is going to be the environmental aspect in the phase one information. So the sooner we get this, look at that, the sooner we can proceed.
And I appreciate everyone's comments and in an effort to try to reduce the amount of time that goes by and hearing Rich, the comments that you just made about various tweaks to different aspects of the ordinance. We had submitted a petition to reason the RMH and as you said, with a covenant that would limit the amount of density because the RMH does allow for greater density. You're right. And then this plan is significantly less density than what the RMH would allow. But what I would want to do is if, if that's a direction, then I would like to be working on that now so that once the environmental issue hopefully is addressed in the very near future, we're not then starting to talk about, okay, now what does the ordinance look like? So is that something that we can, if, if that's a direction, and I know, Rich, you're the one who said, I don't know if everybody agrees that that's the way it should be done. Can we get direction on that so that we can do what we need to do to line everything up and not lose more time?
I'm okay working towards that direction. Yeah, but I, I will have to hear from everybody.
This was your baby, Rich. So, um, you, you can run with it. I'll, I'll discuss this needed. Okay?
That's scary.
One thing to keep in mind, Rich, there are, and just to go back, I think it just helps to be, to sometimes hit the refresh button on why we suggested the RMH. Because it did allow that the, we were trying to work within an existing zoning code that allowed us to, if you pull, put the plan back up, Zach. If you don't mind, that's possible. One of the, thank you. If you look to the left of area A, there's where the access, where the emergency access road is, the emergency access only in that particular area. Our previous plans and that existing zoning there allows to have single family residential there. What we did was we looked at a way to try and better cluster the community and pull it back away from that big area. And the RMH zoning with its parameters and its design criteria, it allowed us to play with the plan and play with the property to actually do that. And by doing this, we reduced our density on the, from the original three hundred and, I think we had three hundred and thirty units at one point. We reduced that down from three thirty, down, down to two eighty. But what we did was we clustered the homes better. And again, for a fifty-five and older community, if you look there in the kind of clubhouse area that we reserved, it allows for a specific amenity and, you know, better open space there. But just as a refresher, why we were discussing the RMH zoning is because we were looking to try and do something, but find, but use the property and lay in a design criteria that worked better.
I don't think there's an issue with RMH zoning. Rich just wants to decrease the underlying density for that entire zoning district.
That's right. That's right.
So as, as with the minute which gives us a number he wants for density, we, we can finalize it.
Yeah, yeah, our density is closer to two point three.
Two point two.
Two point two units per acre, whereas as you can see on here, the RMH is twelve units per acre. So. I mean, that's an easy tweak, as you said before, if that's a decision the township wants to make to the RMH district.
Right.
I just want to know what, what you're thinking about so that I can get that together so that it can be properly advertised at such time as we're going forward.
Process would be that Rich would come up with the density and then we have to analyze other properties in the township with RMH zoning and see what impact it has on those. It's got to be compatible with other districts in the ordinance too.
Or we could do, we could do an overlay RMH with slightly different density requirements.
Yeah, I mean, the benefit of that actually is all the other RMH has already been developed. So that's, that's a plus to make it easier.
And we, and we still need to do some more work on the sensitive sites provisions in the zoning ordinance. And Zach and I are discussing how, how to address that. That'll be part of this, this plan too.
Is he, is he, this simple question, are both area A and area B fifty-five plus restricted? At one point, your B was going to be a millennial target.
What we suggested initially, we, we had a discussion about area B being more of a there's age targeted, right? So you're fifty-five and older is age restricted. So you're either restricting a specific area or you're targeting a specific type of user. Um, I think area B would be a targeted area. And perhaps even more of an attainable product. Um, I think right now there is certainly an issue with, and, you know, people hear the word affordable housing, it's not necessarily affordable housing, it's attainable. Where in our particular market, I think by my last count, there were thirty or sixty single family homes available to be purchased in Great Valley School District. And in, in all of the United States, there's three hundred and fifty-two thousand single family homes available for sale right now. There is a substantial, substantial under, undersupply in the marketplace right now, which is, which is compounding to the rise in the cost of housing. And, and as you see, and this is, you know, the process for entitlements is very difficult, can take years. So if you take this property, it's, from the time we started, three years offline of working on it. There's three years of non-housing stock being in the market. So when I say attainable, that's, that's where we were at. And I think in some of our discussions, we were trying to look to do that. I'm more than comfortable with a fifty-five and older restriction across. But I think we're trying to help service both sides of the community here in East Wild Township.
Well, that's a ways down the pipe, but I just had that question as to what your plan included. Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that taking area A through Act Two. Did you also mean the entire property would have to go through Act Two at the same time, A and B?
So area A with the bulk. Area B was the area of concern for the township, which was the former unregulated landfill.
Right.
As it relates to the Act Two process, perhaps Jonathan, if you're still there, you, you and both you and Walt could answer Rich's question a little bit more directly and more articulately than I, than I, than I could.
Yeah, Rich, area B, given the unregulated landfill nature of it, that would go through Act Two. So as part of a residential redevelopment, it would go through Act Two. And it would be a way to, in the Act Two process, to get closure for the unregulated landfill piece of it as well. So that DEP would have an opportunity to review it and close it out completely under the Act Two program based on a residential reuse.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure. And Act Two is a voluntary program.
That's correct.
So that's one thing that maybe lent, lent, leaned me towards a conditional use process where we would have the ability to impose that kind of a condition. I don't know if we could as part of preliminary plan. I just want to make sure that what protection we might be thinking of, we can make sure it's part of a resolution and a requirement.
We can talk more about that.
Right.
I understand your issue there.
Yeah, we can get into the details. Those are my thoughts. This is March. And you mentioned forty-five days. That puts us in between the March, the April and May meeting.
I was thinking, right. I didn't know if we would have time to, to even, to do the April meeting. Cause that's probably about thirty days away, right?
Well, we don't even know if we've got all the information. I mean, our guys have not had a chance to really go through the thousand pages they got last week. So I, I'm not pushing to thirty days for sure.
Right. That's, that's why I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that. That's why I said forty-five, thinking it would take us to the May meeting. But that would give us and give you plenty of time to review. Obviously, we can always reschedule the hearing if necessary, but I think we are looking to try to get some date confirmed so that we have something that we are moving towards. If we can be looking towards your May meeting, that would give us the correct amount of time to be able to advertise, send it to the various planning commissions, county and township. Also make whatever adjustments we need to make to the ordinance itself and be able to make your May board meeting.
When's, when's the April meeting and the May meeting?
I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
John, Niggle, what are the dates of the April meeting and the May meeting?
April fourteenth and May twelfth.
So if you set the date in April, you'd have to be a June hearing.
Or a standalone hearing. I know sometimes with these larger projects or ordinances, there's a standalone hearing rather than loading up a regular meeting. So maybe an option for that if the board's interested.
I can tell you that we've been after the environmental information for a long time. And we just found out tonight that there's a phase one on area B. That's probably going to reveal further environmental investigation because it's a, it's a unregulated landfill. So I, I think you need to really get a handle on that. Because we don't know what we're dealing with on that.
Just, just to let you know, Joe, there's nothing different that you're going to see in that phase one than what was described this evening. So I understand that you, obviously the township needs to see that and the, your professionals review it. I'm just telling you, there's, there's nothing different in that that's inconsistent or that hasn't been discussed in what's been presented this evening.
It gets realistic to have the, everything else that you have that we, we asked for by the end of the, by the twenty-sixth, which is two and a half weeks, maybe before.
You're, you're asking whether we could get the phase one for area B to you by then?
Yeah.
Right. I would, I might want to speak for you guys, but I don't see why not.
Would think so. I've given even a lot of time.
Already got it. How hard is it to send it really?
Yes, sooner, yeah. So the sooner it's reviewed, then.
Nice. The, the existing, the, the, the phase one we received last week was twelve hundred pages. Do you have an idea how many pages area B phase one is?
Who's, who's asking that question? Scott?
Jason, it's Scott again. And I'm sorry, my camera is not functioning, so maybe that's what's causing problems here.
Wa- wa- Walter would be bet, bet, betting into the question. That's not really necessarily Denise's question.
It's going to be about the same size.
Yeah.
It's got very similar attachments. It's going to have the exact, like I said, you, you, it's not, we're not revealing anything that hasn't already been touched on in the other report.
The board doesn't even have an ordinance to vote to advertise tonight. The, the ordinance is a rip. We don't know whether it's a conditional use. We don't know what the underlying density is going to be. We don't know what we're doing with the sensitive sites provisions in the, in the zoning ordinance. There isn't even something before you that you can schedule a hearing.
Well, we did submit last August our petition with our amendment attached to it. So you've had that since, since then. I know we've been talking about a lot of different things this evening, but we had presented that. I think at this point, we're looking for some commitment on moving forward. And I know some of it's based on us getting you the information, but we're committed to getting you the information very quickly. And we're telling you that there's nothing in that information that's going to change anything that you've heard this evening. I think we're looking to get some confirmation of a, of when we can schedule, or when we can actually have the hearing.
If, if, if I can, Denise, I appreciate you saying that. Walter said something I think was very important. And I just want to make sure that maybe I say it in, in my own words, the phase one report that he's going to, that we have, that's going to be provided is not significantly different than the phase one report that's, that you currently have. We did several phase one reports, ones for area A, one was for, we're calling it area A and area B for the purposes of this conversation. So everyone knows what we're talking about. But as Walter said, the attachments, the data, the information, it's not significantly different from what the eleven hundred page document you already have in your hands, eleven hundred pages of information. But I just wanted to make sure I said that again, because I know Walter, sometimes, sometimes you speak a little faster than I do, Walt. But, uh, we, we're not, we're not, we're not concerned about it. We're certainly not concerned about it. We're not being cavalier about it, but we'll make sure you have it.
That's great. That's great to hear. It is. Yeah.
I have, I have a question. In, in the phase one that we received last, last week, there's reference to potential of, of reviewing. Potential of of uh reviewing uh a phase two under area A. How long of a delay would that cause?
For, I'm sorry, Scott, Scott, are you asking me about a a a phase two investigation?
Yeah.
Oh, depends. That all depends on what, if anything, is recommended.
Well, under the, under the uh the current report that we received, it does reference recommending. While it doesn't appear as though that there's any issues but to to do a an act or a. Phase two review.
So I think what you're asking, if I say this wrong, Scott, please correct me. You're asking, why have we not done a phase two investigation and for.
No.
You're now know what a phase two is after their experience with Farno.
No, I'm just wondering, in in the report, it references that. And I'm wondering how long of a period of time does that take to conduct?
If it were a residential property, we would conduct a phase two investigation in order to achieve the voluntary status of Act Two. If it were any of the currently permitted uses, there's there's no need to do a phase two. Phase two is. It's a very, it's a very expensive process for a property of this size, very expensive. So um, that could take. A few months. But again, it's an expense issue, not a timing issue.
All right.
And you're saying, and it will be done in the future. You will be doing phase two in the future.
Well, if we're going to do a phase, if it's a residential property, yeah, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to execute on a phase two. Certainly, uh, that's that's in order to achieve the voluntary Act Two status.
Again, my only my only question is really, how long does that add to the process as we try to figure out dates?
I I think what, yeah, I think what Jason's saying is, it 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 should not add to the process to get to. Uh, you know, a hearing on residential rezoning or the residential rezoning process, what what's because what Jason's saying is that. Unless this is rezoned residential, he's not going to undertake a phase two on area A, because it it's it is volun-. First of all, the 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 phase two, based on uh in- input from our team environmental. As as well as Jason's understanding of the marketplaces, given the phase one and the use of that site, it wouldn't be required. For uh if Jason wanted to pursue the use, a use that is currently allowed under existing zoning.
Okay.
Well, I guess where we are is I would say, you get us the environmental stuff. I'll start talking to and meeting with, I guess, Joe and Zach and. Going over whatever items I think might be important in an ordinance and go step by step.
Can we try to shoot for May as a possible as a possible hearing date?
Well, we would have to know, we'll know that, right, by April, because April, we would have to have something to authorize to advertise, right?
That would be right.
Right, so, yes.
Yeah, that timing may not work out that well, because your meeting's April fourteenth and your May meeting is May twelfth, so you may have to do a separate special meeting for the hearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You love those extra meetings, don't you, Rich?
Oh, I just, I love them. I don't have enough of them. Near the back, the township, um. I mean, that's.
I I think if we aim for May, um, and and by if we don't have what we need by April, then we cancel it, you know? I don't know. What do you think, Joe?
I I I think the the most you can commit to is to have a motion advertised on your April agenda.
Right.
Okay, we could do that.
Hopefully by by April, we'll have a pretty good idea about the environmental. We'll also have a better idea about ordinances, whether they're going to be a conditional use, how we're going to handle sensitive sites. And and have something actually in ordinance form, whether it be conditional use or not conditional use, whatever you desire. Then you have something to actually vote to advertise. Tonight, you wouldn't be voting to advertise anything. It's not written yet.
Not realistic tonight.
I'm okay with going forward that way.
Yeah, that sounds like a plan.
Okay. Sound reasonable?
We were hoping that we would move it up bit in time. I am concerned about an April authorization date unless you're willing to have a special date. It's we're potentially going to get pushed into June if we had to wait till your your actual meeting. So I think if I understand why you want to wait till April to authorize it, so that you have what you're authorizing in front of you. And we'll continue to work diligently on that. And I guess I would ask if you would consider having a special meeting, so it doesn't have to wait for an entire another month after.
I'm okay with a special meeting. When we get these big controversial issues, we don't like loading it up on a normal meeting anyway. Sorry, Rich.
As long as it's after April fifteenth tax time, I I absolutely not before April fifteenth, I just.
It would be, because your April meeting to authorize is April fourteenth, so it's going to be sometime in May.
Okay, yeah, that that's fine. Uh, all right.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Take care.
Are we done yet?
We have a question, actually.
Probably have some public questions.
Public comments.
Yes. Martin, let's go ahead.
Good evening.
Hello.
Beginning with, I'd just like to say I'm either for or against this development, because there's just seems to be a number of questions that remain unanswered. Uh, I'm not going to waste a lot of time discussing things that have already been discussed at various planning commission meetings and board supervisors meetings. There is one issue I'd like to discuss. On one hand, we've come a long way since the initial plan was presented to the residents. By that, I mean, the number of units has been reduced. The grass and in grass from Mill Lane has been eliminated, eliminated with the exception of the access, emergency access route. Significant portion of the R one low-density residential land behind Oakland will remain undeveloped. And the private for profit ball fields and associated li- lighting have been eliminated. On the other hand, as I say, there are a number of unanswered questions. I'd like to just address one tonight. And if I may, refer to the sketch plan. Back in October, I provided the township. With um considerable information in regard to the history of the Nikabacher landfill. Part of that included various USGS. Survey maps, one from nineteen fifty-five, and I believe the other was from nineteen eighty-three. It shows that there um was a large quarry. As part of the initial Nikabacher landfill permit area, was in the northwest corner of that area. And the quarry back in fifty-five, before the landfill was operated, was actually uh the base of its water fill. But whether or not trash was dumped into it, I don't know. I I think I do know, but I'm not going to. That's not the point. The point is, the quarry is maybe eight to ten acres in size. Is maybe forty to fifty feet deep. I believe somewhere in the late eighties, early nineties, a permit was granted to fill that quarry. With quote, clean fill. You know, dirt, concrete rubble from construction, et cetera. And I raised this issue. I haven't heard quarry B mentioned once tonight. And as I say, it's part of what the initial permit area was for Nikabacher site. And it's within area A, and in fact, the sketch plan shows that townhouses will be constructed on top of it. So the issue is. Does the township want to approve townhomes being constructed on something of fill that's forty to fifty fifty feet deep? That we know is going to settle, because that up until just a few years ago, there's still fill being put into that quarry. Whether or not that can be done, is that an environmental issue, is something the township wants to approve from a liability standpoint? That homes are going to be constructed on there and they're just going to sink foundations, cracks, walls settle, et cetera. So it seems to me that one of the things maybe the township would like to see is an overlay onto the sketch plan exactly. Where that quarry was, so the township knows for sure. Um, and can address the issue. Do you want to approve homes being constructed on top of that quarry site? So maybe somebody can give me some feedback on that.
Martin, as you're looking, this is Scott, um, as you're looking at the the plan that Zach put up. To your recollection, where was this quarry? Is it is it on the western part of area A housing?
Hang on a minute.
It's the area that's highlighted. Yeah, that's right there, right?
It's area, it's area A, but it's a little higher than that. If you go up to the crossroad there, it's Stormwater Basin number six. I don't know who drew this circle, but it's higher than that.
I think it was Zach.
Zach, are you there? Stormwater Basin six, and the road that goes cuts across horizontally at that point, it's in that general area. But it's a bigger quarry. It extends out further to the east, but. I'm just concerned about the homes being built on top of that portion of the quarry that was filled. Zach, maybe you outline that area again.
Is it not? I believe this dot this dotted line here that you see.
Right.
I believe is, if you look at these leader lines, they lead to this dotted line, and and maybe Walter can jump in. I don't want to misrepresent.
That's not it, no, that's not it. If you go a little higher, Stormwater Basin six, I've walked the area many times in the last fifty years. And if you follow the boundary, um, it's sort of faded out. It cuts across Stormwater Basin six there. There. Okay, you have your cursor, I think, right on that crossroad now. There's Stormwater Basin six. It's in that area right there. As I say, the quarry is bigger than that. These homes are being built on part of that quarry. So I raised this issue, maybe it's not environmental in terms of groundwater contamination, that type of thing. But in terms of just a liability safety standpoint, because as I say, it's only within the last thirty years that that's been filled. And it's been filled even recently, in the last, up to last five years. And it's a deep quarry, and as I say, initially, back in fifty-five, the USGS maps show that that was uh the base of that was water.
You know, I, at the moment, I would say that should be covered by the phase one that we received last week.
I didn't hear a word about it, though.
I don't know. I haven't read it, but.
That's, yeah, there's, this is Walter. Uh, the the phase one does have a full discussion of that quarry area there.
Okay.
Yeah, we looked at some, uh, we looked at some aerial overlays, things like that and stuff, so that that is part of what's discussed in the phase one.
By the way, Walter, it's Jason, in in addition to that, our geo- our geotechnical engineering report. Also discusses that area um and the extensive amount of um. Uh, boring and 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 testes that have been done in that area, but I appreciate that comment, Mr. Wallace.
So the conclusion was that it's safe to build on then?
Our conclusion is that it will be safe to to construct the homes on that site. That's correct.
Question I have of the township is, um, well, these documents that have been referred to this evening, like phase one. And any other documents that have been submitted by the applicant and be placed on the township website. For example, phase one. The study.
Joe, can you comment on that? I have no issue with that, as long as our website can accommodate twelve hundred pages.
Yeah, it's a big, uh, it's a big document.
Yeah, there may be file size limits, but we can, we can look into that as well. If there's no issue with posting these types of things, we can, I'm sure, figure out a way.
We we use Dropbox, I know that helps.
Well, I.
It'd be great if I could read the phase one study. It would, one thing, uh, help me better understand the quarry B issue.
I'll have to, uh, I have to, I have to step in here and I'll have to discuss this with my legal counsel um as to. What we are permitted to share from our, from our own perspective. However, I would assume that any report that's being developed on behalf of the township by BTSI. Would be made available to the public that reviewed our materials.
Well, not necessarily. Some of it can be attorney-client privileged, but the document that you supplied to the township is not attorney-client privileged. So that's, that's a public document, subject to right to know.
Yeah. You bear with me. There's one other environmental issue that I'd like to raise. And it deals with the um. Plan showing a multi-use trail that goes along the Valley Creek. And the reason I'm raising that is um. It's my understanding that since Valley Creek. Is an exceptional value stream. That under state law. There is a hundred and fifty-foot riparian buffer required along it. And it also prohibits the removal of any vegetation. So my question would be. If that multi-use trail, in effect, is not feasible because of state law, dealing with exceptional value streams. What are the ramifications? Or put another way, what would be an alternative for that multi-use trail?
Though that I have a good answer for you, Mr. Watson, if that question was directed at us, the developer.
Whoever would like to address it.
Well, there are, there are existing pathways in and around the site currently that are near the stream. Uh, I cannot for the life of me imagine that the Pennsylvania DEP would would have an issue with. Providing public access to a public a a public asset. Whether you go through French Creek or Marsh Creek or any other areas, which I personally. Patronize frequently, um. But I can't necessarily identify that as being a serious issue, but we'll be certain to be able to discuss it perhaps in the future as we get a little bit closer here.
Well, I guess the point is, it refers to certain sections, the schematic refers to sections, certain sections of the township code. And when you talk about a multi-use trail, we're talking about eight to twelve feet, depending upon the circumstances, a paved surface. And I believe. The draft of the township's open space plan, which has not yet been approved by the township. Actually suggests that that might be a walking trail. As opposed to quote, a multi-use trail, which means, you know, bicycles and what have you.
I'd say, Mr. Watson, this is Denise Yarnoff, and I'm I'm thrilled to hear that we're talking about these types of land development issues. And and certainly look forward to continued discussion on these as we get to the land development phase. But right now, as you know, we're talking about the rezoning of the property to the RMH, which would allow for the residential. Which would then ultimately allow for some, you know, form of trail and certainly will be complying with whatever the regulations are, both in the ordinance and both with regard to DEP. So we'll appreciate the. And both with regard to DEP. So we'll appreciate the comments and we'll certainly deal with that in the future.
Well, thank you, Denise. But again, just appreciate my standpoint. I'm looking at it in terms of. The township is buying into this or is attempting to determine whether or not this is appropriate. And it looks very appealing to have this multi-use trail, but. If we know to a degree that it's really maybe not feasible. I think we ought to address it, maybe suggest an alternative to it or call it what it may be, just a walking trail as opposed to all the used trail. But again, I appreciate where you're coming from, Denise. I'm not here to argue that point. I just want to throw it out there.
Yeah, Martin, if I could just jump in on that, I don't want to belabor this point any further because I think it's, it is a good point. And we've had a lot of productive conversation tonight, but Jason and Denise, this might be something that we want to refine in a little more detail. As we kind of work through some of these ordinance questions that have come up tonight. Because as Martin says, the, this is the concept plan that in theory would be tied to a covenant. So we should make sure that it's at least viable. There's been a number of alignments thrown out in some of our studies. So maybe we can look at that as part of some of the conversation we'll be having over the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, Zach. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more with a question or comment. Tim Van, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Yeah, thank you for all the conversation. I appreciate it. And just one comment and a question with regard to the consideration that you're making. About the potential rezoning. And I did hear everybody's comments. I appreciate it, but I heard Rich and Sue, I think. Both say that you lean toward residential. And I was wondering if, for the sake of the community. You could make a statement about why you lean towards residential. And before that, I just want to make one comment, which is that there's a negative to residential. A couple of weeks ago, the Great Valley School District just sent out an email saying that there will be, they expect to have nine hundred new students in the next five years. And they're building, they're having to reconfigure the middle school. And we have a whole range of density and I appreciate Rich trying to get the density. Now we have a whole range of density. So I hope that you can consider a diversity of density in new approvals and not simply say. Old zoning is is less dense and new zoning is more dense and have more of a nuanced view towards that. But having said all of that, if you have a bias toward residential, instead of lean, instead of just accept. Instead of just having no change to the zoning and accepting office and business park plus R1. Could you make a statement to the public about why you, why you think that?
Yeah, I will. Like anything that, like many controversial ones that have come before the township this active year or a couple. You know, three, four months, there's pros and cons to everything. The way I look at this project, first I look at the location itself. The location is actually leans it more towards commercial. Other than on the western side, the row of houses. So I give the edge to commercial, but not, you know, probably more than fifty-one, fifty-two percent. A very large benefit of the residential is open space. Odds are, if this was, it's probably not likely to be office ever. If it's anything, it probably would be warehouse. And they tend to be pretty big, have little open space and quite a bit of asphalt. So that leans me towards the residential side. Mill Road. The willingness to restrict the Mill Road exit to emergency is a big plus. I, I can't see, I think it would be hard to legally restrict. Mill Road if there were offices put in there. And Mill Road is just not a place to dump a lot of traffic on. It just doesn't make sense. With the willingness also to have, I think, at least half the project age restricted. That covers, it certainly reduces the, the problem on the school district. And the final criteria I think of is traffic impact overall. From what, I forget when, but I was told that there'd be less traffic generated by the residential side. I mean, those are the, of the five criteria I look at that I can think of off the top of my head right now. That I've thought of. And I guess four of those give the edge to this, the residential side. That's how I come to the leaning.
Thank you.
I would, I would agree with Rich. The things people are most concerned about in this township seems to be traffic and too many kids in the schools. And if this project is restricted to fifty-five plus, that solves the school problem. And it would be less, far less traffic than a large distribution center, plus the open space option. Which I believe we asked them to put in the trail along the creek. So that's our leaning at this point.
I forgot one, one negative is if there's no driving range. But.
What do you got? I think it's important that you've made those statements so people can understand at least where you're coming from.
Sure, no, I agree with you.
Rich, I'll add that just to confirm what you're saying is that underneath the McMahon Engineering Study. Traffic was going to be much greater, not much, but it was going to be greater with potential warehouse facility there. Then residential.
One quick question.
Really don't have a good sense of what a distribution center traffic pattern would be. I mean, that's a new use and that's a lot of trucks.
Is that an assumption really that we, that that is appropriate? Because if you look at Sidley Road, there's on four, on Phoenixville Pike. There's, there is a distribution, there's not a distribution center there, but there's a warehouse with trucks driving in and out. What would be the difference? And that doesn't appear, I don't see a whole lot of traffic in there, at least when I'm driving around during the day. So what would be different?
That's a traditional warehouse. These distribution centers are a totally different animal. It really is. It's more like a massive UPS center where the big trucks come in at night. And then thousands of little trucks go out during the day. It's not like Raymore and Flanagan.
Kind of like an Amazon fulfillment center.
Amazon or Google warehouse. Yeah, it's just not Google.
So for example, maybe more like a UPS over on Airport Road in Westchester where if you drive through there, go into the Y in the morning. There's a cop there because they have to let all the UPS trucks drive out, you're saying.
All right, yeah.
I think it's UPS on steroids.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Donna, have we had any more comments?
No.
Okay.
Looks good.
Thanks, everyone, for comments back and forth. I guess we'll get back into the meeting agenda.
Thank you, Jason and Denise.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you everyone again for your time and and comments and consideration.
Thanks, take care.
Good night.
Once again, I'll mention that my camera is not working here. Otherwise, you would see me. I apologize for that. Going on, there are no. Items under four C. So we will move on to four D and I guess we will simply. Rich, I'll ask you if you make a motion to. Consider extension of time underneath Nickerbacher.
Clarify that this is not the Nickerbacher we've been talking about so far.
Oh, I see. The extension of time you're talking about.
Time.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion to extend the time for us to render a decision on application SD twelve twenty twenty. For a remnant parcel subdivision of Nickerbacher lands to June thirty.
Yeah, I'll second that, but just for anybody who's listening, when two oh two went through the landfill forty years ago. It left a couple little sections on the south side of two oh two that were never rezoned. That's what we're talking about, not the big parcel that has been the discussion so far tonight. So I'll second the extension of time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Item number five, board motions and resolutions. Rich, I'd like to hand this over to you for five A.
Yeah.
Your relationship with the fire department is legendary.
Yeah, well, I guess. Yeah, I've been, I'm treasurer of the fire company, you know, at the meetings, involved with the volunteers. We learned that Matt Fink, Chief Fire Official, is retiring after twenty-six years. A very, very well-liked, very capable, very well-regarded. You know, helpful employee over the years. He will be missed and will be very hard to replace. We're working on that now, identifying people. But we wish him well. And I understand he'll be at the next meeting for recognition.
Correct. Matt is going to be, as is committed to be at the April fourteenth meeting.
Right. His last, his last day is now till the end of next month, the end of April.
Correct, April twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so. Wish him well.
Yeah, I certainly second that. In my dealings with Matt, they've been. He's been. Tremendous asset to me and his comments and help throughout the district. Will be missed.
We have to make a motion or do we just noticing that he's retiring?
Looks like we need to make a motion, John Niggle.
Correct? Uh, yeah, I, I suggest out of respect for Matt that we. Accept the notice of retirement from Matt Fink after twenty-six years of service. Matt's been an exemplary employee for the time I've been here. He took over from Ken Batten about five years ago. And he's the voice of reason when there are issues of dispute between different groups. Regarding fire and EMS. He's usually the one that is the arbiter of those types of things and he's very good at it. So he will be sorely missed. We're going to try to pick his brain as much as possible over the next month and a half. And we are in the process of rotating the captains through some training. So that they can also learn from, from what Matt has learned over twenty-six years, at least working for us. So again, he'll be back on the fourteenth, so we can save some of this.
We'll say more, more nice things about him next month, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's it.
So Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I regretfully make a motion to accept the notice of retirement from Chief Fire Official Matt Fink.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Zach, next is. Just the ongoing situation with the guncle mill. And probably has been talked about many times, but this is, do you want to give just a short brief on this?
Sure. This, this is a proposal from Ben Hassett Mill Rights. He's a renowned millwright, someone who we've been working with on this project. This is for the actual installation and some of the mechanical work to make the wheel, not only to mount the wheel, to some of the other aspects of the project. That'll kind of precede it, but also to do some of the internal rigging and connection of all the, again, mechanical pieces. That'll actually allow the wheel to spin free. It won't be fully functional as part of this project. It won't be a power source like water flowing over the wheel. But it will be free moving. And again, this work is specific to the installation, mechanical work. Some of the other stuff that's been authorized previously is more related to the site work and the civil work to create a wheel. That will not only self-drain, but also support the wheel or create a pit that will self-drain. And then also some of the concrete work that'll support the, so.
Okay. And once this gets put in, we're on the backside of this project, aren't we?
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it does seem like this could come together this summer. I'm always cautiously optimistic with this. But because we have hit a couple of bumps along the way, but everything is falling into place finally. The permitting through DEP, the civil work and bidding process. So I think this is, this is all moving very nicely in the right direction.
Okay, great. Looking forward to when that's completed. Sue, would you like to enter?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from BE Hassett Mill Rights. For mechanical work on the mill wheel, not to exceed twenty thousand five hundred dollars.
I was second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Zach, though, I have, I have one question. Is that something that, I know there's no kids in their right mind that listen to these meetings. But is that something that's climbable if kids are walking around there for some reason?
I would say just to my experience being out there, it'd be difficult to get to. You know, like for child to get there, other than maybe on a bike or something like that. But it's not the easiest to kind of climb down in there and get up. There's some vegetation there now, but that's something, I can talk with Jeff Door and.
You know, I don't expect it to.
That's a good point. We should be, we should double check that for sure.
You should also put a fence over, forgive me for interrupting, but I was there when this project started. I would expect that you would have a fence around the mill pit. Because if somebody was walking, even now with the vegetation, they could fall and really hurt themselves and it would be a big liability issue. So you'd have a, a minimum would be a fence to prevent that kind of thing, but nothing's impenetrable for a determined teenager.
That's right. Yeah, there is a fence there now, a split rail fence with some mesh behind it. So we'll, we'll take a look at that and see if we can, if there could be some improvements there. That's a good point. Thank you.
Next on the agenda would be Steve Brown to give us kind of an update on the. Summer concert series for this, this upcoming season.
Thank you, Scott. As the agenda says, it is maybe to have a little bit of discussion, get some input from the board. And it is an, an update. As I understand it, the Friends of Summer Stage that has put on the concerts for a number of years. Is really not functioning as an entity any longer. And this was discussed to some degree with the Park and Rec Board at their February meeting. The township has budgeted money as it has for the past few years. I believe the amount is ten thousand dollars to assist in putting on concerts. After the, the Park and Rec Board meeting at the end of February, I'm not quite sure of the dates. I had separate conversations with two members of the Park and Rec Board. Who basically said they believe that this would be an activity that the Park and Rec Board could. Could take on and possibly put two or three concerts on this summer. So the idea is that. Tonight, we get some input, any thoughts, concerns, issues, you know, initial thoughts, concerns or issues that the board. May have then, if you are encouraged. Then we would take it back to the Park and Rec Board for more discussion at their March meeting and then bring it back to the supervisors as appropriate.
Well, Steve, if, if we could, if we could just maybe jump in here during the Park and Rec meeting. And I know Chuck is on, on here as well tonight. That we ran into some problems with the Friends of Summer Stage as far as the, the, the ability for them perhaps to organize and put on. Any concerts this summer.
Right.
That's what, that's what he said. So looking at is the Parks and Rec Board willing to take on the scheduling of additional act or of the acts. Instead of the summer, whatever.
Right. So, so when we, when we look at that, we were trying to think a little bit outside the box in terms of, is there anything else we could do? Are there any other organizations we could look at? Could we partner with People's Light? There were some of the things that we were, we were talking about.
Yep. You're right. I mean, that is a possibility. People's Light put on drive-in concerts last summer, and they are doing it again this summer. I'm sure they'd love to partner with us if that's something that we chose to do. So you're right, Scott, that would be an option. And again, this evening is really just, this is just on the agenda to see if, if the board has any initial thoughts, questions, comments, concerns as this discussion moves forward.
I mean, it's, it was always a nice thing. It was always well-attended, but it certainly takes time and commitment for somebody to, you know, put together, which makes it pretty hard. And it's also nice that it's outside, even if, you know, many, many have been vaccinated by then. That to be outside is better. There's room to be further apart. But it's all depends on if somebody has the time and energy to do it. That's the hard part.
Right. Sue, any thoughts?
If somebody wants to take it on, I, I can't see loading it on Steve Brown.
Right.
If somebody else wants to take it on, great.
Well, thank you. I, I personally do not want to take it on, but I would.
If you've got too much on your plate already to take that off.
That was actually a big part of the discussion at the last Parks and Rec meeting too, so absolutely correct. But I, I'd say if, if, if there's a way that the Parks and Rec can, can maneuver through some of the obstacles here, I think I have his support from the board to, to go ahead and, and try to make it happen if possible.
Yeah, let him have at it and come back next month and tell us what kind of progress he'd made.
Okay. All right. I see a thumbs up from Chuck, so I think that's what we'll do. Great.
Yeah, thank you.
We have a couple of questions, actually. Deb Moble, go ahead. And meet yourself, please.
My, my, my only concern in the planning is that we are, we are very excited about or anticipating the end of this year-long struggle with COVID and that we not rush into things too quickly. I, I, last, the last time I went to a concert, it was actually rained out, and I ended up in a bar, which was fine for me, but I don't know that it was appropriate for everybody with large families who were there. But I also don't think that those kind of backup plans are necessarily appropriate in this time. So if, if, in their planning, if they could consider those kinds of things, the amount of restrictions they, they put, even on the park, we're asking people to socially distant this summer. There's still going to be a lot of people this summer that don't have their shots that want them. So, you know, if we could put certain provisions in that way, I think that's essential. Thank you.
Next up.
Yeah, I, I agree, and that is absolutely something we would prepare. We would prepare a COVID nineteen plan for the activities.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have another question. Barbara Ann Tav, go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you, everybody. Good evening. Barbara Ann Tav, Broadleaf Trail, former Parks and Rec Chair, as well as Parks and Rec Board Member at the time that Friends of the Summer Stage was established. Some of you were not part of the township or part of the board back then, but I just wanted to remind everybody, since we just earlier this evening heard from Jason Dempsey. Jason initiated Friends of the Summer Stage several years ago under the assumption that over a few short years, the concert series would be self-funded through sponsorship dollars and that the township would not have to contribute financially. Unfortunately, that hasn't happened quite yet, and the township has regularly committed pretty sizable dollars each year. So I just wanted to share that with everybody, just so there is a recollection of how this was initially to be set up. And the Friends of the Summer Stage was set up as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And so, Steve, I'm, I'm not quite sure I understand your statement about that they're not functioning as an entity, because I think they're required to, and they're required to do reporting as a 501(c)(3). So I think if something is sort of disbanding there, there might need to be somebody that looks at those documents for how that was set up. So I just wanted to offer that, and I, I agree with Deb's comment. I think for this, and also either, and you've heard me say for summer camp, I think there needs to be very clearly outlined COVID prevention plans that get put up on the township website for residents to see and review. And, you know, following CDC guidelines and our health department guidelines as well. So I just wanted to add that color commentary about the history of Friends of the Summer Stage. Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead, Steve. But, yeah, I was just gonna clarify that we're not, I guess, at this point, disbanding the 501(c)(3) aspect. It's just that the, the folks that served as members of the Friends of Summer Stage just have run out of steam. We'll put it that way. So, yeah, exactly what happens to the 501(c)(3), I don't know. That's, we, we have to just talk about that, and maybe John was gonna speak to that, but that's something to be decided. And just the summer camp, yes, you're right. We're actively preparing a COVID plan for summer camp, and we will be following all the appropriate guidelines.
Yeah, Steve's right. I just want to add two cents on the 501(c)(3) status. That's a status with the IRS, and the Friends of Summer Stage has always been independent of the township, although partnering in a very informal way and a very productive way. We're, we're a separate legal entity. I don't know that it's appropriate for us to be getting involved in how that's structured. Matt McGuire, I think, who's an attorney, has helped construct the way that organization operates. And so my suggestion would be that someone reach out to Matt, and if there is a plan to dissolve the 501(c)(3), that, that it be led by Matt or someone that's a part of that 501(c)(3). We are not legally part of that because we can't, because of fundraising requirements from the IRS.
John, just to add to that, I believe our finance director, though, has been involved with the paperwork processing that has to happen every year around that. That was something that they, that.
That used to happen. It doesn't happen anymore because it's inappropriate for the township to be getting involved in a nonprofit. It, it's just, it's a conflict that we can't. We'd like to help them as much as possible. We have offered them help over the years, but really, it's, the 501(c)(3) has to be autonomous because of its status, 501(c)(3) status with the IRS. So Matt's very clear on that. I've talked to Matt about that on a number of occasions, so I, I think he would agree about that.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. John Neal, if you could get yourself ready for some, some background here as to the, the Malvern Hunt version project with this bid for one hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yes, we had the bid opening last Friday for this small project over at the Malvern Hunt Treatment Plant, and the low bidder was AJ Juric at one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The next second bid was one hundred and seventy-one thousand six hundred dollars. So the other two bids after that were in that one hundred and seventy thousand dollar range. It was a little bit more than we expected, but this is an important project to, to get done for a variety of issues. The age of that plant, the permitting issues where we have to renew our permit this year if we don't divert away from that plant. And we're recommending to go ahead with awarding this contract to AJ Juric.
John, do you see that this would be kind of the final phase in expenditure for closing this?
What this does is it diverts the flow from those houses into the trunk line that runs down the Chester Valley Trail. And then that would give us a clear scope of decommissioning the two lagoons and the, the actual treatment system. So there'd be no more flow going in there. We would still operate the system till all the, the sewage in those lagoons is gone. And then we have to get our plan approved through to the EP for what would be the true decommissioning of that whole site.
So are there further expenditures you think that you would be coming to the board for, for this project, or would this be pretty much it?
No, I think there might be. It's really, the discussion is what happens to that property and how we go about the final decommissioning of that property.
Does that building that's on the, I guess, in between or next to the lagoon, does that go away?
Yes. Yes, the lagoons would be reshaped in a way that wouldn't hold water anymore. And the buildings and associated piping, any utilities there would have to be capped or removed.
Sure, okay. Okay. Sue, any, any comments?
Now, we gotta do this. We've been talking about it forever. Time to get it done. So I'll make a motion to award the closing of the Malvern Hunt wastewater treatment to AJ Juric for one hundred and thirty-five thousand and change.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I guess, Don, are there any public comments?
No, there are not.
Exciting topic. I'm surprised there aren't. Okay, next, we've got Chris Jaeger, if you're there, wake up. Don't you love coming in last on these meetings? We've got two vehicles, probably nothing major, just a brief overview, please.
We have the sale of the 2010 Ford Expedition, and we sell them through municipal bid now, which is auction, a live auction. We've been doing fairly well, and this time Mr. Nagel requested we start using a reserve. And so far, for the first two vehicles that we're using on, it's turned out quite well. So Ford Expedition was actually a fire department, fire marshal's vehicle that sold for eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. That was in very good condition, so from that perspective, it pulled a lot of money. And if I could do the separate or together, it would be the, also the sale of 2008 Ford E350 utility body diesel truck sold for twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. That vehicle was previously a truck that was purchased and built specifically to function as a truck inspection and weighing vehicle, as well as a rolling crime lab if we had to respond to any type of scenes and things of that nature. So it's, it's been sitting for a while, and we decided to get rid of it. So that sold for twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. So we're looking for approval to sell them to the people who are the highest bidders.
Looks like you got good prices on those. That's great.
Thirty thousand dollars to go.
Thirty thousand dollars for old, old trucks. Okay, great.
Scott, if I, I could just add, the chief's been pretty humble about this whole thing, and just to add a little bit of levity to the discussion. So we've been trying for a long time to sell the utility truck. Originally with, it had a lot of work that had to be done. Originally, we got about five thousand dollars is the highest bid. And so the chief and I basically agreed that we'd put some money into the vehicle and then watched the price go up, and, and I would ask Chief Jaeger to describe what happened at right towards the end of the, what I would call a unexpected bidding war on that piece. I think when, I think he sent a bid record that it went up significantly in a very short period of time.
Yeah, so just quickly, we, originally, it went on to municipal bid, and it only brought like fifty-two hundred dollars. That was way under what the vehicle was worth, and as, when I discussed with Mr. Nagel, I said this, it's gonna take somebody who wants this specific vehicle, because you can't really put a worth on it unless it's somebody who can use it as is with the, all the custom things that were on it. And I think we found two people at the end of the bid, and municipal bid has a little thing where you can't bid snipe. So at the end of a, an auction, for the last two minutes, every time somebody bids, it goes two more minutes. So this thing was originally at fourteen thousand dollars at the end of the auction, and I was watching it live because that's what I do at the end of them. And so ultimately, in fifteen minutes, it went from fourteen thousand to twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars.
Nice.
Somebody, there were two people who really wanted it and could use it for some of the purposes that it was built for. So it was interesting and to our benefit.
That's great.
Great. In, in the meantime, we establish as the chief preferred to, municipal calls a reserve, I call it base, baseline price for it, and so we're using, maybe Rich has a better alternative, but we're using the Blue Book, Kelly Blue Book for that, and adding some fudge factor for all the fit-out that goes along with some of these first responsive, responsive vehicles. So it actually was a good process to go through since selling some old stuff lately.
Great.
Okay.
Great, yeah. If you have any more that are used like that in decent condition, let me know. I have access to a database of current sale prices of used vehicles.
Great.
So.
We just want something objective to say, you know, these are taxpayer dollars, and we, we're getting at least what the fair market is.
Sure.
Great. Sue, can you make a motion to package?
Can we do that? Okay, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the sale of a 2010 Ford Expedition for eighty-four seventy-six and sale of the 2008 Ford E50 for twenty-one thousand six hundred.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sold.
Sold. It's gone.
All right.
Next, we'll move on to some motion to advertise. Zach, get ready, get set, and if you can give a bit of an overview here under the zoning text amendments for seven A one.
Sure. So the first is for the repeal of Article nineteen of the Township Zoning Ordinance, which relates to processes for amending the township zoning ordinance, much of which is, all which is really covered and governed by the municipality's planning code. So we've found that some of these provisions in this ordinance are either redundant or, you know, slightly, not drastically, but inconsistent with what's in the planning code. So the thought has been to repeal that and refer directly to the NPC to avoid any sort of conflicts or missteps on procedural aspects of these types of processes. Joe, feel free to jump in on anything on that, but really the idea is just to kind of pick one and run with it rather than having conflicting requirements.
Yeah, that, that's a good summary. The state law preempts us anyway, so there's no reason to have an ordinance worthless language that just confuses people and, and adds claims that people can make, you know, that we've self-imposed upon ourselves. So it makes sense to just defer to the law that governs zoning amendments.
Okay, thanks. Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to, let's see, this is the first one.
This is just to advertise.
Right, to establish a hearing date to amend ordinance under East White Lanzani ordinance to repeal article. hearing date to amend ordinance under East White Lanzani ordinance to repeal Article that's nineteen, right, XIX?
Don't confuse this with Roman numerals, okay?
We're not in grade school anymore.
Next month, we'll go through the whole ordinance, get rid of all the Roman numerals.
Please do.
So there's actually a question. Um, Tim Caban, go ahead.
Hi, my question, so I'm looking at this and it appears to be a one-sentence opportunity to be heard. It says at a public hearing, full opportunity to be heard shall be given to any citizen and all parties with legal standing and interest. Is that what's what's proposed to be removed?
That's a that's a portion of what's being removed. Everyone has a right to be heard at a zoning amendment hearing anyway, but there is no such thing as standing. So the reference in that ordinance, the standing is antiquated and doesn't apply to rezoning hearings.
Okay. I just find that there is such an asymmetry of legal knowledge between the township and the attorneys and the community. And this is such a simple statement. And you make the you make the statement that it's it leaves it open for people making claims. I mean, I find removing this sentence to be an affront to the community and to be without reason to do. And one other thing is that some of these other changes that have been made to the code in the past, the most recent one was done when the sign distance was mentioned at a meeting that I actually watched in retrospect. And it was said, oh, well, we're just cleaning up the code and we're just, this is just procedure, we just clean up the code. And then we ended up having three signs rammed down our face on thirty that was used as leverage to put up the electronic billboard. And then we acknowledged that we were erroneous in doing that by changing the code back to what it was. So forgive me if I'm skeptical, but I really find this action to be a gross insult to this community. Thank you.
I still recommend changing the ordinance. Okay. I guess. Rich, you've made that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. Under seven B. Zach. Motion to advertise. You can give us some background on this.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, just a motion to advertise. It's actually a resolution that's passed to set the hearing date. Uh, this is a firm amendment to the Township Zoning Map to rezone two properties on the south side of Lancaster Avenue on Mail and Road. So between Buckeye Terminals and Bishop Tube, currently their zone RRD or Residential Revitalization District. Their request is to return those to their previous industrial designation. I believe the applicant's attorney is here, Allison is, yeah, there you are, to answer any questions. Allison, I'll let you take it from there if you'd like.
Good evening, everyone. Allison Zarro on behalf of the applicant, which is the property owner. These two properties are located on Mail and Road. As Zach indicated, they were previously zoned industrial district and the property owner desires to have them returned to industrial. I will note that in addition to the zoning map amendment, the applicant also submitted a declaration of restrictive covenants. We recognize that there may be industrial uses on the property that would otherwise be permitted on the property under the I District that may not be appropriate. And so therefore, the applicant is also proposing to voluntarily restrict against some of those uses being permitted on the property. And finally, I would note that currently this property is zoned RRD, which has a ten-acre minimum track size. These two properties do not currently meet that ten-acre minimum track size. So right now, they're sort of in limbo with nothing being able to happen on them, which is the other reason that they're requesting this change.
Sue, Rich, any comments, thoughts, questions?
This is just a motion to set a hearing, right?
That's correct.
So we don't have to argue at every piece of it, although generally speaking, I think that there's been a lot of discussion with this in the planning commission and we've talked about it and I think it'll be an interesting hearing.
This is heavily steeply sloped, right? That was the problem with the residential part of it.
A portion of it is, not the entire property, so we are aware of that. But the app, the property owner believes that under the I District, there'd be other options to do things with the portions of the property that are usable.
Sure. All right.
I guess I should clarify, these hearings are at least tentatively scheduled for the fourteenth of April, the regular meeting on the fourteenth of April. I did not clarify that.
Okay.
All right. Rich.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to establish a hearing date of April fourteenth for the ordinance, for an ordinance amendings, Township Zoning Map to rezone properties at nine and ten South Mail and Road from RRD to I.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for waiting around, Allison.
No problem. Good night, everyone.
And now throw the ball over to Ted Locker with some zoning updates here for the Verizon Wireless variants.
Hey, thank you, Chairman. We have two new hearings this month for zoning hearing board, first being an application of Selco Partnership, which is Verizon Wireless. And they are looking for a variance from section two hundred ninety-two F one, which would allow the placement of a wireless communication facility on top of the building at forty-five Liberty Boulevard. This would be a five G technology. The five G technology currently does not have the ability to I guess, transmit through the stealth technology that would typically be employed on four G or lower. And then these antenna also are basically a single antenna on the corners of the rooftop on this building. So it's not a bundled, large antenna. These are single antennas that are probably about twelve inches wide and about four foot high above the roof on on the four corners. Uh, this is in the Office Business Park zoning district and I believe that's pretty much that application. We do have a representative here for the law firm representing Selco if there are further questions.
That that's the Microsoft building?
That's the Equus Capital Partners, same one.
We just gave ninety-nine new parking places there, right?
Oh, that's the same one. Okay.
Yes.
That's right. Where they gonna put it on top of the building, closer to Sweetsford or Liberty or in the rear?
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. It's Mike Shearing. I'm here on behalf of Selco Partnership. And the the proposal, the variance itself is simply for relief from the F one section of your ordinance. The the use for the rooftop mount is permitted by right in that office district. We're just asking for relief from the stealth technology aspect of your your wireless telecommunications facility ordinance. To answer your question, Rich, to answer your question, the the equipment that will be located will be in the center of the building and can't be seen from the ground anyway. It's the essentially, the arrays of antennas are gonna be on three sectors, three corners of the building. So there would be approximately six to seven foot of these panel antennas that I think we're all familiar with if you looked at them on a cell tower. And they would be moved to the corners, the respective corners of the building to provide essentially that in-building coverage and the capacity issues in those respective sectors. So it's Verizon's position that, but well, first off, they'd like to use the five G antennas because that's where the technology is. And from a stealth technology perspective, putting some kind of fiberglass screen actually affects the signal for five G in terms of those panels. The the thing I mentioned to Ted earlier when we talked today was that it it may not be something that the board wants to do anyway, simply because I did send in the photo simulation with the application and I think Ted or Zach may have it if the board's interested. But the photo simulation shows that in fact, by seeing a, you know, three smaller panel antennas in the corner, it may look better. These are about four foot high antennas. Of course, they're on a mount, a rooftop mount. My read of the engineering plans is they would stand about seven feet at the most above the roof line. That would, and of course, that's seven feet would be if you were at that height of the roof, forty-five feet, looking horizontally. But when you're looking at an angle, you may not be able to see them. But my point is by putting some fiberglass screening or some cloth screening or something in three different sectors, it it probably draws even more attention to those those panel antennas. So that's really a summary of the relief. You know, to the extent, I know it's been a long meeting for the board, to the extent that you care to see the photo simulation, I think either Ted or Zach may have it, but
That's okay.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like something that the zoning hearing board needs our help with, in my opinion.
Now, to buy right use.
Right. They just, they just don't want the screening up because it interferes with the technology. All right. Let zoning hearing board deal with it.
Agreed.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the second application is an application of the Sisters Servants of the Immaculate Heart of Mary for a variance from section two hundred eighty-three C. This would be to allow a second sign. It's a monument on a wall. Area of the signage itself is about twenty-one square feet. The sign would be on a wall that is basically six foot tall and twenty-six feet long. The property is located at one Our Lady Circle, and it's located within the institutional zoning district. And this is out at Immaculata.
I'm not opposing any nuns.
You're taking yourself off of that one, Nick.
Flashbacks of grade school. Bless you, Joe.
It's just a standard sign. This isn't a digital sign, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't wanna get, I don't think we need to get into it. Zoning hearing board deals with signs all the time.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right, and those are the two applications. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted.
That's all you got, Ted? That's all?
That's it.
All right. Moving on to public comment, are there any, any folks out there, Donna, with public comments?
Yes, give me one second. Marty Lutz.
Yes, hi. Following up on an item I raised at last month's meeting, and basically, the question is, what what's the status in terms of filing the covenant for the open space in Ecology Park land that was recently rezoned? And when will that document be available to the residents?
That document has been filed, so it's a matter of public record at this point, and it's in the Township Building.
Could that be placed on the website for this for that particular item?
Zach, can you put that on the website? He's shaking his head affirmative.
Sorry, I was, I was too lazy to turn off my mute button. I apologize. Yeah, we can, we can place that on the website.
Great, thanks.
Donna, anything else?
Nope, doesn't look like there's any more questions. No.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions pertaining to that, Sue or Rich?
Uh, no, I have none.
Nope.
Well, then why don't I read it and then we'll just approve the package. So approve the meeting minutes from February ten, twenty twenty-one. Ten B, ratify the payment of bills in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-two cents for February twenty twenty-one. Ten C, accept the treasurer's report as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Yes.
All right. Lucia, is that, is that your first report?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. I'm very excited to present you my first financial report. So in the interest of time, I will not bore you, but I'm going to give you very quick synopsis of our financial status for twenty twenty. We are, I'm very pleased to tell you that in every source of revenue, real estate, EIT, LST, and department earning, in every source of revenue, we are doing better than budget. And we are also not just doing better than budget for twenty twenty, but we are also doing better than twenty nineteen, actual to actual. As far as expenses goes, we are under budget in every section of budget expense, expenses. For example, operating budget is under, operating expenses are under budget for twenty twenty, so is wages and health insurance, retirement benefit. One thing I would like to mention in health insurance, we are doing better than budget significantly, which is hundred twenty K. That's a saving, but it's a sad saving. Somebody passed away, so we didn't use that money. So we're doing better than that in health insurance. And in wages, we are doing better than budget because we delay in new hiring in twenty twenty. So in some, in summary, I can, I can tell you that we are doing better than budget in revenue, and we are, and we are under budget in expenses. We had three millions of surplus for December year-to-date, which is going to change after our audit is fully completed. And so the focus for this presentation, I had one, the General Fund and Capital Improvement Fund. So that was about general fund. I'm going moving to capital improvement fund. Again, we are doing better than budget in capital improvement fund as well. As far as cash balance goes, in general fund in twenty twenty, December, December year-to-date, twenty twenty, we have seven point two million versus December twenty-nine, we were five point six million. So we are doing better by one point seven million compared to twenty nineteen than twenty twenty. And we are also doing better than twenty nineteen in the capital improvement fund by hundred seventeen K. So if you need me to go in any detail, in any section, I will go, but I know you're tired, so I just want to give you a good picture that we are doing very good in our revenue in every area, and we are under budget in our expenses.
Okay, great.
Very, very nice, Usha. And and if you're gonna give us reports like that, you can come back every month, okay?
Okay. So far, it looks great, and we anticipate it's going to be, you know, looking great as far as revenue goes, so.
Great, thank you.
That's great with how last year was so crazy. That's great.
Yep, good news.
And with so much uncertainty. So, yeah, that's good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will add for ten D is to ratify the underground services proposal for locating utilities along Backton Hill Road, the amount of twelve hundred dollars. We've talked about that at Parks and Rec. That's, that's a necessity for us to to move forward on that project. Ten E is to ratify the proposal for B S T I for three thousand dollars. And that pertains Steve to the
That's Knickerbocker.
Knickerbocker.
The phase one.
Phase one.
The phase one that we discussed this evening.
Phase one review, right? Phase one review, right. Something we may think about is that if we get phase two or the second phase one or the unregulated portion, we'll probably need to have the STI, take a look at that as well, obviously. So.
And we get the other phase one.
Yeah. So do I have a motion for consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as we had.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passes. Any other business not discussed so far?
None.
Then I guess we would call that a wrap and thank you, everyone. And have a great night.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.